I'll go ahead. First, we need to reconvene campus. We didn't finish on Monday. So they're already getting started back there. They have to be in the same room as the county commission. That's the reason we wanted to do this meeting here, so they can get started. And now, we're going to go ahead and stamp the pledge of allegiance for this regular meeting, page twenty-seven. Mic's up here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, equal and just. All right, looks like we don't have any celebrations from April, November, May thirty-first. No voices. Eighty minutes for five fifteen. Second, all favor five. Five seven, if that, five fifteen, go ahead. Good good good, five seven. Okay, we're not going to be certifying election results today. I'm going to move that we set that meeting. Page twenty-eight, favor. One of you. All favor. Insurance policy renewed. All favor. We've heard the higher contingent on her passing meeting test. Product management. If the sheriff's department. So that's a grant for shelves from the sheriff's department and a scanner and accessories office. Label, share for the accessories office. It will be approved. All favor. CRS, community certification. The CRS standing for community rating. Unit's rating system. I need the letter started. Okay, airport board. The airport authority. And is. Anyway, we need to start. We need to put our selection, so we need to. I have two recommendations for. Recommendations for Christian Catholic who's. Airplane fixing cloud. Selecting them who was here to pause at the back, in the back as well. Opera, some. And second question. Chris Fussell. He's someone that I'm making. There are some projects underway that involve. Maybe seal of six. He also has a lot of connections to Christian Catholic. So by the way, he's working here, so it's lucky to be. Very good days on through those types of things, you know, that would read the surf. My turn, I'm actually making the decision. Yep, you guys go ahead and review your something. Sorry. Uh, saying. You know, you would run the resource center, we do this every year also. There's a weird. All right, that was the Southern Soil Conservation District agreement of things.
So the Southern soil takes care of all streams. Here is the water that we have throughout our harvest season. It's almost with an agreement that can't afford here. That was signed. They had the audacity to send this out there. That says, well, this can't afford here, so it needs to be redone. It's all the best time.
So we have an agreement for Southern soil to take care of all streams and bodies of water. Throughout part of the state and parts of Southern soil that. And came to perfect her doing one of these sides of agreements. That stretched through and had awful issues. We told them about it at the time. Oh, it's okay, go ahead and sign. So we can still contact the issue. Streams that were ready for flood, streams that need to be refreshed out of smitty. Then would create bad water quality, several other ones. Well, they had the audacity to send this in cover, but that's so good for several issues we've been vetted. So issues can prevent. So we will not make those letters, because it's very important that we continue. Make sure that the stream that takes care of this will be in heaven and death. From streams without them.
That's the CME. All right, emergency management letter. Okay, this is, this is just an update to the state of who the chain of command is over at the nine one one center. There was some confusion. So we drafted a letter to identify where those people are and what their roles are. Did we approve the letter? Thank you, my God, all favor. Staffing the public center agreement. Okay, we're going to strike that from the agenda until people get back to us. If we go again to present the name, we'll think of this for me, pick a couple of ways.
Okay. Armstrong Creek P S D is made up of two parts, a sewer side and a water side. The water side is taken over by a wish to be there. The sewer side still has some commissioners. Unfortunately. Our vast commission of. One's washed. It's been healed, like it's not a mission. So now we have zero commissions for that area. The intent is to have. Three commissioners from the Armstrong Creek area to take care of the sewer. At this time, we have zero, like you said, there's a project going on. There's checks that were signed. To replace it, the water technical field. But it's critical to take care of. Relentless people. They're also facing a P S D. From coming up. Can all falls. Send a letter to the P S D requesting that we're in charge of taking over. Customers, so the sewer customers, the Armstrong Creek citizens are already processing. On the sewer that comes through. So we as commissioners. How we plan to see this first. So it doesn't pay. Secondly, I'd like for us to consider that since we cannot find commissioners to send a letter to the P S D. Bring the. Ask. Go ahead and bring Canall Falls to take care of the sewer.
Jonathan Bruce is the head of Canall Falls P S D and expressed interest to me some time ago that. If West Virginia, especially if West Virginia had water to go for their water services, that they would like to pick up the wastewater services for Armstrong Creek and Page King. Whether or not they are still interested in doing that, I don't know. Just wonder whether they voted on it, but I know that they were definitely interested. They wanted to keep their employees and they thought they could handle the work. And of course, we know West Virginia water is not interested in wastewater service. And we want to provide water. So. Should we do a letter to. Canall Falls first? They have to request. So why don't we, why don't we start with a letter to them? And we can put the banner or the letter to the P S D on the tip.
Yeah.
And this is how much. We can, yeah, and ask them to come and they can bless them with the success of their story. Second. All favor. There you go.
Yeah, that's what I was getting at. They're taking a break.
I remember telling me back to the word, we had to. If you were, you want to come up with something that we have a server.
Yes, I know. She said, I'm preventing you to. Let's give it to her. Taking steps. From operating that. And based on. Perfect sets having to take. Some of the questions. I'll be presenting my position at this time to be able to action. And I'm.
Good morning again. I have two paper for the server that I've been charged of. One was Hunt Field's father. Twenty twenty-two, they're the ones in Sunline Green. She did with us in two thousand and sixteen, both of them terror state. The one on Sunline Green. Interested in the land that he had out there. I probably must have my personal story. But with the law basically. But both of these detective persons, they are in this home. This is Alson's wife. Thank you for my next one. Again, is it Hunt Field's father or the Sunline? They don't have any whatsoever. They've been pixelled, paid by the mean.
Got sorry, take it back. Yeah, we made it. Okay, so they go like. The first address is Donald's. It actually known before, but the contractor. They didn't follow the contract, so I'm looking for the state that would be involved. So we had to fit that. So it's great to be addressed.
Again, brother, what was proud to let this about?
Reclaim bid on almost god that I need to tell them.
Okay, I have two. Both the ones you shared was talking about. Hunt Field was nine thousand. And Sunline Road was nine thousand. Empire's. The nine hundred two.
So I'm going to leave you there. Empire's did it to all the work in the conference. This has been some.
Okay, check, all right.
The town that went air force. They. They had a wall so. More consistently. How much delay it should. So we are looking at. The other. And the time that I'm saying is that they have. And also state. However. They should see how they're scheduling that. Their, the town. So we have things in place.
Also, if you were.
I mean, that we approved it.
Have some question. That's it. Um. So there's a question. All the points. That opportunity. Yeah. There. Making sure they're not specifically. That's a bit hot today. Just doesn't really. I don't think we may even have the words. Can cross, we have everything.
We received four bids. Second, I'd be able to help them. After. Architectly, there was a bit, the basic changes and. Public secretary. And helps. I'd be happy to. I'm sure it's open to many. You can report the amount these labels assist to the architect or formally. Putting that.
Hey, I'll start. Harris Brothers from Princeton. Had bid one hundred fifty-two thousand two hundred eighty dollars.
So ahead. Right until we move out to six hundred. Okay, this page is true. Third rate construction group. And their fees is one hundred thirty-seven two hundred eighty. Transcend construction for one hundred fifty-seven thousand, twenty dollars. Yes, Detective, we're ten thirty of this. Mr. Holstein, the fair. I always call it crazy. We have played at ten thirty. We have Mr. Holstein. That's all nine issues. Don't think you want. Okay, good boy. Thanks for giving the. Let's keep you on. Okay, that's photographs, not programs. So. This first photo right here. This is what it looks like. Hold on, work now as a tip. Not yet. Picture. In here, they got. Okay, if you look through the photographs, they're all the same over time. This is what our roadways look like. In packs. This photograph. Is just one whole truck. That's the dust that one truck produces. Okay, so if you get to this photograph. It looks like a big. If that's what it is. So that's directly off the tax rate. And I don't know. You all know this, but. Out of resources plans to put a smoke man in. It's gonna be a hundred feet of. Actually, that's two tenths of a mile. As it will. So when you look at these pictures at the roadways, the dust. I'm being told. That they plan to go seventy million dollars into that problem. A smoke man. Another addition to their loadout, which is directly across from my house. And a side track that will accommodate fifty cars daily. But they eventually plan to go up to one hundred cars a day. So what does that all mean to you? I've asked them to, within the open wind, the communications director at Alpham. Tennessee. I'm also. Message Mr. Eaton, who's the CEO. Which nobody replied. I want to know how that's going to affect. Of course, me personally, the topic would likely be across the road. I've asked the mayor of Texas. They say they don't know. They have no idea what the exact expansion project looks like. So. I want to know if anybody could find out. How that's gonna affect. The facts.
He probably. Did you want to say something? He's not as an official capacity. Yeah, he's just a community outreach for Alpham.
And then also, if I were to hold permission, that the company's dealt with seventy million dollars. One of my smallest businesses, Alpham. I want to know what that looks like and how it's gonna affect the brand community and the folks that make that. Okay, I. And I will. About half of it. Okay, I think. It's. Actually, look down. As eight of a mile. It's a little mad. It's a. It's upward of the ball between. A crowd. It's a patient person issue. I'm told. To. Hey. I think it's. I'm probably. Of your thoughts. I'm not making much. I'm told. Those are supposed to set up. I'm listening. So. Possibly. At where they. I'm just leaving. This. A lot of the. Uh, but to be. Say. I'd be. All sorts. Uh, yeah. Big work, getting some delight. Well, one o'clock. I'm all. Uh, all. About. As a back. All. This whole. Or all of West Virginia. Others. Other than the bulk of the whole thing. I don't think you did. Sure. I may go with your statement. As to make sure. You know. Maybe. Send it better. About venture. And I'm now having contact. I have. Works for last thing. I'm. E. But they would give us a problem. I just wanted to. That that is. Last. Like. If you all. And I'm absolutely. I. Um. I'm. Last thing. Did they have. Thank you. So. But they're paying somebody. I trust that process. Oh. It's. Always. That's a big. Size. Here. Anybody. As far as the last. That's it. Last. Not. Or I I don't think there's. That. As they. Probably do a lot. And. Right. I think. Hey, I think. I just. I'm sorry. I think it's. This is. Anyway. At the D. The. I didn't. I'm. She is. That's. Uh, this. The. I'm. Oh. What's. The. Hey. So. I'm. I think those are. Fair. I don't. Our. I need. That's. It's all. And. I'm. So all of that. Please. On the. On. Open. From. I'm a. I'm. Better play out. During the. Of the. Possibly. I appreciate you. Thank you. Sure.
All right, I guess that's ten forty-five. I want to understand if. Y'all have some buttons to read, uh, submit, or is it the same button that was submitted a month ago? I'm just curious. Okay, minus eight. Roots not here. So you got the same button that I guess we're gonna discuss fire buttons today. Before we discuss fire buttons today. I do want to. Help with fire keys. All the fire keys here. I think the commission is going to start moving towards a fire management policy. And in this reimbursement policy. I brought the auditor that were his members down here. State auditor. Because what we're going to request, I believe, is anybody that receives lending funding has to be signed up. On a checklist. Anybody that is here today. You might want to go ahead and try to sign up an auditor. And that's the only thing I was. Reimbursement policy. Checklist. So people say can't see action.
Amy told me that Mr. Kirkchicken, he had a presentation. She wanted to make me borrow a screen and everything. I know we had John Don from Fire Train. Okay, so that's so that's what we're gonna do. Whenever you're ready.
Oh.
You all seen that? Uh, first thing I want to do is let everyone know that we're all in the same page. When we talk about the training budget, uh, what was submitted was not coming out of the allocation for the fire department to save us like. This is what we're asking for, this two million dollars that we've been saving since nineteen ninety-nine. So I want to make sure we're all in the same place with that. And put the money back just forward with the budget. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. No, no, that's fine. We're always just gonna make sure everybody's in the same place, page, because this is part of the surplus that we've been relating since nineteen ninety-nine. On page two, you'll find a base package. Two thousand four, spring, Brookfield donated a property to us that we established a bit. Started a plan for the next five years. You'll see a copy of that. Right now, where we're based too, which is our hazmat area, that includes railcars, prop, chemical liquids, and so on. We're about seventy percent complete with that. That brings us to page three, which is what we're asking for, in terms of infrastructure of our building, water, fire, building. You can see there was a hundred fifty-six acres that was done in Brookfield. We've been working non-stop since then. We demolished the hub house that were on face, did it several times. Started a place for it, which is in the fall of two thousand. Started that. That has a back ground, like so, it's well above our heart. Where we're at today, we have twenty-six certified destructive trainings. So eighteen of those are certified fire maintenance, which we were trained on by Gregor. And here in two minutes, we'll have a support letter with Doug Clark, which is Assistant Chief of Oregon Rescue, come up, and thought it was fourteen and thirty-five. You want us to remember this from the ways we've been on fire department, we train, and to date, that is breaking with what we've trained so far. Right there, right now, third year, the next page, where we're at. We have an additional training for the next two months already, pretty clean, including one tomorrow. Right here, the instructor that came with us, as well as our support staff. And our support staff is any member associated that's not a certified instructor, which is worth their tail dog at their rate. Without him, we would be sore handed, some of the things that we have to do with our department. Training requirements, I know that was asked us the last week. Right there, the initial training that's required, and then our legal refreshes, what we did throughout the campaign. That is not a single string, is what each chief recommends, per each department, for their conservative training hours, per each department. Department by department, yes. But now what we do is the department, when we take generation class, and you'll advise us or exit, so on. Then we will use that as county-based training, which is the fire extinguisher. So we do a lot of that at the center, but we can maximize it. Right there, this is the next page, is the list of some of the donations, some of our sponsors that have gotten so far, that's put us where we're at right now. There's been a lot of equipment and training donations through those companies. Brands we have in progress. Each year, one of our fire departments in our county will sponsor a regional brand, an association. This year, the fire department is more experienced, uh, we put it for a couple of teams, uh, for the facility to assist us with the training requirements for water supply, not just for brown area, but second area. And also the issue earmarks, the capital, and the order for special operations. The tanker itself was five hundred and six thousand dollars, and the earmarks was eighty-six or eighty-eight thousand. And part of that, as part of our base, will be through our special operations training, which is at the center. And if we receive those, those are not only used in the training facility, but they can be used for response, anywhere in the county. But... Uh, what we're asking for, our training committee goes, is to start our next study cycle, July one, two thousand five. Uh, we would like to donate a lot much, uh, like the fire department receive, for fifty thousand dollars a year. What that reduces is replacing costs of PPD, equipment, materials, the other projects. Instead of us going just once a year, asking for money. You know, if we receive this building, then that's our big project that's coming up, and we would just ask, run a lot like the other departments. Okay, yes, this, this is three months ago, you all approved fifteen seconds, okay? July one of this year, we're gonna be purchasing another eight seconds. Okay, now, when I talk about the cost of PPD, NFPA advises, recommends, and you're looking, recommends to replace their containers. I will tell you this, the ones that are doing the burns down there, we will probably get about three years out of a second. Okay, so that's going to incur the cost of that. And we might, a year from now, get a rip this year, something like that, even replace banks and so on. But we're gonna continue to build our instructors as well. The next year, we'll do an additional course, because in order to become an instructor, number one, you have to put out the fire sample. The number two, you have to have a minimum of five years of experience. But we've got several other young ones that's coming down, are part of our support staff, and has the main supply for the fire. So that's gonna need to put into that as well. Now, there are, there are many fire departments that have them now, but they haven't had the requirements to become instructors yet. You have to have several, several classes, and several years of experience to prove what your fire system is, to become an instructor. Right there is a couple pictures of what our lifetime here looks like. As I mentioned, a few minutes ago, we have three upcoming classes, uh, which is one tomorrow, and then there're gonna be several in June. T. Philiotti is doing a firefighter book class in Valley. Myself started on it up here, it's in the left, it up here, so there's gonna be two more additional training before you can handle firefighters that we will be using for the facility. Uh, the last one there, uh, to talk about the current training for Josh Davis, asked you all, uh, last week. We're going to bid out the fire samples with the state a lot of money. Okay, part of that, we will do the service training at the facility there, with our live burns, to train everybody in those camps. Now, how, how it will, that, okay? Last year, several fire departments in the county went ahead and purchased thermal energy, because ours was out of that. Okay, this is not on your slide, I made this, because this is how important they thermal energy cameras are when we're training. Okay, we had a committee investigate, but took the risk, those thermal energy. We used the new seat, which Montgomery, that came out of purchase, soon then, okay? And it's leading me to this, right, on January twenty-eighth, that we had to start the fire with the track in Oakfield. If you look at those timelines, we were dispatched at six fifty-five in the morning, and within six minutes, five of us was on scene, ready to go. We used one of those thermal energy cameras, and we saved a life, and had them outside of the house until the end of the mess, within two minutes. Two minutes, but if you look at that timeline, this is six fifty-five in the morning, when everybody is in bed. And we're on the scene with six minutes, pulling somebody out, and right now, the guy is out walking the call. Those numbers speak for itself. So when we talk about what's this training facility do, right there, it's approved for training, saving lives. That's how important this is. Now, I'm gonna back up here, because I had a break in the news. I have a top of this stream ball. Right now, that our training center trains, classes from other counties. While accounts, uh, vocational schools come over every year, we have been working with this state county for several years. The operations center that we're asking for, that two million dollars is going to play an important role in this. Because what the state county board education wants to do in school year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, to start a public safety force, which is already approved, our education, several county's doing this. This will train first responders in that county, while they're in high school, when they turn eighteen, we're gonna have certified fire departments. Now, that before the staff, you guys get fired, since you sit behind them, they will tell you, I would pull the edge with somebody that's already trained. It saves money, it saves hours, and the most important, it's gonna help save lives. But now, you're gaining extra people that you don't have to train, and we're doing this for a while. But that's very important. We have partnerships with... City of Pearl, Fire Department, the National Guard, City of Bedford, City of Bedford, Public Service Training, um, it's a number off. And also have a lot of support here, the chief of fire, who's not only trained at our facility, but is also taught there at the rest. Any out of county firefighter comes in and trained, it's a hundred dollars a person.
This is a video, may I know?
No. They do better note that those can count as firefighters. We do not charge any firefighters in that county to train in our facility. No, the only people that we charge, that, like tomorrow. Yes, no. Right, no, now, if you look at some of the conscious shifts on the previous tables, some of those were donations to cash to the training center, which we use on equipment, resources, and so on, already. And a prime example would be right here, if you look at, uh, the special things donations, Price Day, Gregory, the new founding pipeline. Famous cash donation that we turned around, we definitely, we purchased, uh, two home loads for our facility, but we maintain all the property. Right. Okay, if you drove across Golly Mountain, you would see there's a couple piles of buildings, around sixty. Okay, they had two piles there, one, we worked with them very well, so it was a safety area for their projects, with their accident access, and they weren't people those. Additional pile of buildings was for us, to help build some of our new roads, which is going to go into our different places. Board Education, for the past two years, they've donated to us each year, uh, for our training, which our next training will be October, for August tenth and eleventh, where Genesis fire equipment and rescue are coming in to train our county firefighters and school buses, which is... Right. All right, yes, but, and I'll tell you this, the reason we have class studies for yet, because we don't have a building to fit any of them. And if we had class, then we could bring in these guys, do the new classes. But we could, the state county board has fixed right now, there's no sense in asking anything, till we get the okay of you all first. But we could, the state county board has fixed right now, there's no sense in asking anything, do we get the okay of you all first? We haven't asked anybody, I mean, as a first step, you all. Because if I start asking state county board education or other vendors, don't for donations for our facility, and they come in and tell us, no, what good's saving? You all are the first step. That's why we've been doing this for three years. Prices went from seven hundred thousand to two million. We wait in there each day, and we're wasting time. That's our, you all are the first step. Like I said, that's why we've been doing this since nineteen ninety. Chief Learning, Chris Stinks, Steve Fritz, and all them, they did this before I started. You know, I started in nineteen eighty-eight, all this stuff was established. I can go on and on and on, but you all are the first step of approving our funding. Now, if you all approve our funding, I'll be the person to take it. I'll go to Mr. Hogan tomorrow, he sit down with him, work on the plan for establishing a safety case system. That's not a problem at all. And Steve can elaborate more when it comes to funding, the excess money that's there, but he's the one who started this. It'll sustain itself one hundred percent because you've got to have fire training, you've got to have training, all that. So that's going to be there, and that's the important part of why we're training with you. But if you look, we're not giving them. But the fire service requirements are still going to be there for questions from state fire departments, and they're changing every year. Well, right now, there are no other ones close. You ask everybody, and I'll give couples that support that, and I'll let them, that say they will continue coming through us until of what we have there.
You know, four to coverage expanses, is that basically what you're looking at?
Yes, it's it's made it's great to make.
Right. Price. Right, another, uh, skirt called, the skirt called blocks is spread by the public safety training. It's back to public safety training, and like I said, it's about, don't don't have other than that, what we do anyway, but we'll pay back seventy. We are paid state public services, whether you hear, children, fractional teaching, the simple fire one, five, six. See, I'm strong. That's for all. We're talking utility, we're talking ability, so. I'm here as well. I was there. I was there, making some of the great fire. Living all of them, completely, living all the changes, now, purchase, feel, function for fire department. Sex, building, you know, that's what counts, they, we need for the public safety, that's what they're, not again, fast, not again, office, that's all for folks who are paid, paid for. Right. 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 No, what it is, is kind of what how do we look at chat at fire training? Just, I mean, it's it's the law. We have to meet certain criteria before we can put people in fires and whatever, or X, whatever needs to be. We create an opportunity, something together, stand at the same bible, or plan, but we need to be able to have opportunities. Like, we thought, we we thought training, wow, thought we, we could have, the first step about this, we wouldn't do registration. Take up the first hour alone, go along with classroom, uh, there are things, if you get the call, it's like, another, make almost half the time to flash. We were upset that we were able to do this, carrying expenses, practically, we left one hundred and twenty. Just the level. Five weeks of weekly, it's still back in front. This is heading to many of the most, fire level, or things. Let me have a question. What is the difference between how, if you're thousand, not a hundred and sixteen? The roof was shorter, or, or? It was one of the pilots that had a check. And the commission said we could not, we could build a building, so we could buy a, a support fence. Well, all right. There was maybe those, there was a good one. At that time. But that's that's the only reason we had to prepare, because he would have found. If I could believe the good faith, that's the, but I'll say the worst that we did, we should, that the county health, the areas, the department, the show this. No one there. It's set up, it was set up to protect this. And that was over the middle dollar, so that's your name, hey, so. Now, all. I don't know, like, off, kind of, the, faith is brand, but on its face, this is another power, that's the, the national. This is a five of us. That's very essence, that's it's a letter, most of the. That's different, that's very reasonable. No, that's not the same, there there would be. That's not the same.
Okay, and I want to address one of the things you said. You said it's cheaper for our firefighters to travel somewhere else, you're absolutely wrong. That you have no clue how much it costs to pay our firefighters to travel to the county. They supply classes, lots of guilt, and every fire chief has vowed that, because I know it. It is a lot cheaper for us to train our firefighters in this county, with the exception of seven elsewhere, because it's a lot more money.
Right, right, so you have to.
That's what I'm saying, so.
What was that?
It is a five of us. And that's, that's.
Why do we even have a father with three sixty-six? It brought that status for we are just, my fire department's not father.
What do you think if you sell this light on the fire level, it has to be eighty-three percent?
What about fire station to guard? That's a moving ball, that's that's cheap, thousand people, thousand. We actually, uh, proved, prior to this, that, that's all now, according to the slide. Also, based on our protection, our, that's why it's. We still want to go build, that's the question.
Have regular.
Right.
So, the thing is, is that's the best, best, county, that's the best.
He just won. That's not, you know. Who's that? No, no, actually, the public service. Um, we believe that. And allow us.
But it has to get sustained, so we're like, that's the end.
The business plan grew out of the way, really. Now, obviously, since I built this tomorrow, without terrorism, all company, uh, this will, this will, expansive. My question is, being able to. But what if, here we. That's why you have to cover this, that's, check everything for weed, place the bomb, think situation. What was that? What's the difference?
Well, I I was.
Yeah. Two thousand and one. Yeah, okay, exactly, so what's the difference now? Between between purchase, three buildings? I get eight, nine, ten. Yeah, that's fine. Yeah. What's that?
It's something that you mean, so we're now to be possible.
Okay. The big sale. Basically. This is. Is it? Find some. It's valuable for us. They didn't really have a fire moment. Pursued through your national. As it's a real problem. Maybe they're. We can help. When the boss. Didn't start with your passion, so. Road traffic. Now, so. Say this, say this. And you don't shut. It's going, it's going. Americans are really good at this. Local businesses. When we talk about training. They're going to. What if they. They don't take some consideration. Since somebody bought it, I remember. That's not extra dollars, that's not ours. He says, that can, that's what. And. Those. For hours, you say, volunteer. That's worth a lot. It's coming with the family. Instead of going off the transition. Here's the law. Some of the. So. The theory. Was that. Also. Like sleeping. If there's. Then we have this. It. That's. Which. That's what we are. That's. Go. I see. I would like to hear some. Last thing to down. But. It's a little. It wasn't ever a test. But it's why. Yeah, that would be all. What about if there was a. How if it was. That was barely drawn out, so it's there. There's a situation. With police. We wouldn't.
I just know all this to now, but technically. So. We don't have. Time for this. Access tax. Like, I would like to see this. You have to sustain itself. Where you're able to buy them. Just to, to get your building. And at least build out. I'd like to see you able to sustain yourself without spending down.
You know, any contest is. Best is probably. Any contest. That started off. Now, the first few years, unfortunately. So I got my business. We, we, this. As everybody knows. We need it. We need to go to the point. And it's broken. And it's just a. Baby scale right now. For saying. St. Albans came here and. Our team says. If there's not going to like this, there. There's a clue like this. And, and people are from America. That. They've got this stuff here. And they have the old. These guys. Take their place. But. Now, I got. What. And you're sure. Bosses in there. This is, this is, they were way out. Want to say.
I don't know what. It's fifty thousand. A minute of this time, but I'm being. But it's four, but I was beginning. Yes, but that's.
Hey, if you're.
Thank you.
Oh, you can't. I, I said. We haven't seen business plan, and I said also, this annual lot. Seems to be, like, we, we get a lot of people coming and asking for money for certain things, but there's. I don't see the data to back it up, like. Like, how many pieces of PPP are trying to cycle without that or something? I'm thinking, you're saying that it's going to get fried pretty quickly down there. Uh, other equipment, materials, and other projects, this seems like a lag. Like, I would like to see what this is based on, how many years to think before they need money, before we were self-sustaining? Because this place has to become self-sustaining, it's not something that the firemen. Put or should sustain in perpetuity. Uh, it, it, it just isn't, it's, it's, it's a great. Asset of the county, but we have to figure out how to fund it. Um, without an excess tax. Like, that's just my view. And, and I'm, I'm willing to work with you on other funding we have and things like that, but. Some of these numbers, they have to be backed up by the business plan, like, what is the plan? When do you think you can sustain it? Or raise your prices, like, what's going to happen? And then, there's the other issue, that it is S five five zero. And not A five, the campus, it doesn't matter what entity it is, a private entity, it's not. Citizen state campus, so that's the other issue. The police, as you say, is a ninety-nine year lease. That makes me think that. It's not a five-year lease. We're not putting a bunch of money into something that could get sold out of under. All of our assets. That's, that's better, but we haven't seen. I mean, that's nice. But, you know, we need more information. Um, rather, and I know that, you know, people have been more flexible in the past, whatever. Come in, match the money, and not ask for specifics, but we want specifics. But we can.
Okay, I'm gonna make things, try to make that. Last year, for twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three, we had fifteen percent growth. In order to increase the fifty thousand. And take the. If you still keep charging. Increase price. Place in charge of the director. If there. Two point. Years. So. But I see you're looking at fifty percent growth. That's what I'm still wanting. I'm gonna say. Tell us. When they were speaking, they, they. Of the world. Now. Please tell us though, how much? How many days is this here? You probably don't have that. But. Tell us exactly how much debt we need to go into. You want to see. Every gun you want, twice. But we talked about a lot of, I know, we're talking about expenses. And the basis for. If you look at current costs and what we think it costs to work.
But I mean, you think about it, if you were in a festival. If it's another layer. Not even our. That's the other.
Here, here's another point. That when we talk about. About this. When we had a written agreement. Very last night, the agreement was. The brothers don't want to be able to leave the expenses. Now, it's. Push. It could spell anything, it could. It's not the. Very good. In tax. It's always a. Yes, yes.
It's not that's a thing.
I tell you, if the brothers fall short. You have to hold back. So. And I. Go here. We're asking this place. Say. I'm ready. Oh, yeah. If there is going down. He's the brave, he's gonna get back, I was gonna ask the article, steak and cheese. We talked about tech. Just by memory. I recall meeting back around, uh, asked, uh, Skyler, colleague. From the audit of all this to talk about checkback, because I'm an ass. Uh, implement a universal policy that. Tell that, uh, actually. Anybody that uses Webinar. We'd be signing up for check for, before the check for, so people.
Thank you. I'm Skyler, this is Jacob. Uh, so, a few years ago. Uh, when we started this transparency. Bay County, one of our early adopters, we just got the county signed up a couple of months ago. Uh, a couple of years ago, actually, we started with Bay, Bay Bill, City Bay Bill. Uh, they were one of our first to sign up with this transparency site, and so. Um, a bill was passed that you guys are requiring, all, all of your private apartments. Your part of check for by twenty twenty-six. So really. In, in the, in the sense that you guys are, you know, discussing your specific county situations here. I'm really just here to show you guys the black hole, to show you what you do at some of the time points. That you folks are required to do this, you have a good handle on it, maybe you can get like a pilot fire rec set up. You guys can be early adopters of this. Before we deploy for the rest of the state. And you guys will be the most familiar with it, and hopefully, we think you can outsource between you guys and the county. What we believe is transparency is good for everyone. It's good to build an argument for funding, it's good to build an argument for the opposite side of that. When the data is out there, you draw conclusions with actual data, rather than using. Politics or whatever, to make decisions, that's how we want to develop. As you stick, we want to make sure that the data is matching and everything is going. Everything that we're doing is, is making sense with the data. Uh, that's really what this program is about, to show taxpayers how their money is being spent, while also making good decisions. So we started, uh, when this started. We did it at the state level first, and then for ourselves first, at the state level. You can go here, wchbook dot gov, and that's going to show you all of the different types of expenses that the state incurred, including revenue. You can see how the money's coming in and how the money's going out at the state level. By the market, by phone, by expense type, anything that you want to look at, as far as the state's budget, how the state's spending money, you can go on there and look. Um, so what we're end up doing is. Uh, we're gonna have a tab here, similar to how. Tiles are set up currently, there's gonna be a tile that probably would be on. Where it's gonna say volunteer, private, private expenses. So folks, you click on one of those tiles that has that on you, you can connect to all of the individual sites. Um, but we have a lot of different types of data here. We use this enforcement, you can go on there and see, you know, what kind of things that the sheriffs are, are confiscating and seizing from individuals that commit crimes. Um, as far as typical pricing transparency, you can see what drug companies are spending in order to make the drugs that we need to survive and to live. Um, when there's an economic development grant, also, it's mainly controlled. Put on state, people are basically where. So if you want to see the board, the board of education here, how he's spending money on, you can go county by county on this list, and click on anyone. So every year, we update this, so you can see what the boards of education is spending money on, down to the very lowest, whether it be tires for the buses. What they're paying for books, uh, what, what, you know, the money that they're getting from the stations, certain grants, what they're spending on technology. Um, gas lines for the buses, I mean, it's, it's really, really deep, so if you go in there and play around with all of the data. About that same level of access to detail. Um, from the. So this is sound effect. And as you can see here, we have the budget a little bit of. You're over here, and you can work on getting us some data for the, for the next, this is the current. So we're gonna get some data there. Um, but they have the budget loaded in here, and then you can see based on their budget what they expect against the budget. So you can keep running, like, a 50 budget, if this much money, and all of our expenses in detail are listed here. And how much of us expect against that budget. Which provides that level. So click on expenses. Now, once you click on the expenses. We can see the breakdown of the types of expenses. If you go over to your. Go down a little bit. You can break down. You can see all, yeah, you can see all of the different types of expenses, by type of expense, whether it be a capital expense, a utility expense. Uh, whatever, whatever. And then, the corresponding transactions right there. Let's go down a little bit, on this transaction supporting, it's going to the right. You're in, the debit and credits of what that's going to be the budget for each expense. You're able to see they debited for this service, or committing, or they credit, respond. See the actual bookkeeping occurring for each transaction. So there's three main facets to. The transparency at the point, and that is, well, reports, dashboards, and stories. And so, you guys are basically gonna be using this for transparency purposes, for folks to be able to get on a portal like this, for folks to move the expenses. But if you wanted to take charge of it and really use it for what we provide in other counties, and how we provide for the cities. There's a lot of different elements to this that can help you better, better manage your money beyond whatever accounting system you have, you might not even have. You might not even have any. But this will give you a way to view your data and take hold of it to be able to make those good decisions and stay on topic with the finding. Um, and so. And one of the one of the components of this is here. So if you want to say you want folks to see how much you're spending on fireworks. Or you want folks to see how much money is coming into the bingo fund. Or the round or whatever it may be. We can set up a filter here upon a button. That auto jumps you to a point of the platform. So if folks want to see revenues for bingo run, they click that button and it sets them right to that revenue. So they can see all of the different instances that that money is coming in down to the very finest detail. So detailed transparency is really cool. The next part, go over to Metro. The dashboard. We can take the same view like I just showed you. Those auto jump buttons in the platform. And we are able to go through. So as a fire chap or as a treasurer or as someone working in the administration of the volunteer fire department. If you want us to help you build a build a dashboard, you can keep a running tab day by day, month by month. On where your finances are at. And you don't have to go into the mundane task or the entire clockwork. You can go to this dashboard, be able to hover over the different elements of the dashboard. So let's say you want to look at, um, like I said, how much money the the bingo works. How much money you spend on spaghetti dinner. Um, whatever whatever the case may be, or how much, you know, what what your cost is for haul. Some of you might already have that. Uh, but this is gathered and captured here. So you folks can build your own interactive dashboard and be able to follow along with how the money is. Um, so not only are we trying to provide transparency for public, we're trying to give you guys tools and resources that are ready to money and help you out. But just put them extra. Tell me who to. Um, so the last thing we talked about is stories. So this is Elkins' story. Fayville had that too. Um, but I like using Elkins. It's it's a really good summation of of what this is about. So in Elkins, they had one percent penny tax. And whenever he raised taxes, first thing you end the state of the world like a legend. Um, one of the first things people do is they take their torches, their pitchforks, and they march on city hall on the streets. They are running. Well, they did that in Elkins. And people were really upset that they installed a home protection. So Elkins set up a story to be able to visualize and show folks how that extra penny is being spent. So you can see here, they show where the money coming in for twenty twenty four. They have the whole. And it's allowed. You'll see here, they show folks basically what they spent the money on. So that money that you get from the county or that money that you get from the fire protection farm that's running down from the legislature. Uh, that extra money, if you want to show folks, hey, we're not just pocketing this money and buying trucks for ourselves. We're doing things to help you. For pictures, videos. Uh, you can put PDFs. If you wanted to put the physical invoices that you guys are paying, that you're paying to vendors for certain services. You can put those invoices online and you can show folks, hey, we didn't just get this money and keep whatever with it. Uh, we we did what we said what we were gonna do. For further information, you can keep saying the fight. And you can justify all of that through this to be able to prove your story through. Um, so it's a good way to show all the good things that you folks are doing. And it's a good way to keep accountability, you know, throughout government. That's where we're going. And then last thing, make it a little bit. So what we're doing is this was a request from the legislature. The legislature wanted us to set up a pilot program to have folks, um, come and join us. And then we're gonna get this done for the first twenty thirty entities. And and you can really likely folks to be part of the cut out tent so far right now. Um, we want to do this early, the fourth twenty twenty six. So then by the time this holds route, our first date has to be on it. We already done the checkpoint. We know that we know the getting out, we know the problems that we're facing. Some of you might be a member entity, a member volunteer fire department, have an accounting system, have a dedicated treasurer, have administrator stack will be able to handle the bookkeeping day to day and be able to sort of data. Some of you don't. Some of you might keep your books on Excel or maybe you keep some paper. I don't I don't know the situation. But we are. Get all of that data and use all of those different occasions and see those different situations that will make the picture for the entire state. So if we have a small volunteer fire department with no staff, we know what to do when we get in versus a volunteer fire department that has Excel, QuickBooks, or whatever. To be able to transfer the raw data and be able to transfer the financial data to our site. So that's what the pilot program is for. The pilot is to make sure that we do it right the first time. So then when we deploy this to the whole state, we have a template ready to go to deploy the business. Um, and so if a customer wants to struggle, I'll set up I'll set up a table here. Um, I I really love it if we get all of your contact information. I've already given given my contacts to some of you. Um, but if you guys want to come sign up and get this, get this going early, so you guys are done with wait for twenty twenty six. And we're gonna we're gonna use your model of your template to deploy to deploy this throughout the entire state. Um, and so it would be really easy, really helpful to get not only to get done what you guys want to get done, but it will help us a lot to deploy this for the rest of the state once we get you guys done. Um, so that's why I'm here. Just wanted to show you guys, you know, what all went into this. Um, and how this all worked. I know it's a little scary and some people do. But we want to do this with you and not that. We're with you. And and I'm willing to take whatever questions. Oh, yeah. That's something that's something that we that is something that we discussed. So not every. I I think a lot of volunteer fire departments are different. And if you did it by a case by case basis, it would create a a huge amount of work. Simply because some volunteer fire departments, all of the funds of the accounts are under the umbrella of the city. But then you guys have your own separate accounts, right? That are capable. Okay. So if everything's under the city, every single funding. So that might be a little bit different. Um, but I know there are some volunteer fire departments that are sort of flawed. They have a couple of lines that are under the city's umbrella. And then they have a couple that are like just for their own, like their own specific accounts or their own specific funds. But the other funding comes from cities or from county. Um, where they're under that umbrella. On, just to be honest, I think we'll probably take it separate forever. So each volunteer fire department will have its own layout and then cities will have their. So similar to how we got this set up for the education. When you click on Bay County, it's gonna be a list of all of Bay County volunteer fire departments. Um, when they go back. They click on the. And this is where we go to our municipal county transparency treasures on the municipality. But these are all volunteer municipality. What's the state right now? Now, we have a lot more participating, but these are the ones that are live. It'll be a list like that too. You can click on your county and it'll correspond with all volunteer fire departments in that county. Cause I I feel like if if you rolled it all into cities. Then folks would get confused about where the fire. So we just made it look like it's policy. Each volunteer fire department gets their own site. Yeah. Good question. So another thing we can do is click on click on. We can double check. But this is Bayville's site. And this is their story. And like I said, you can embed other other websites and other URL into this page. And so it would be seamless. It would be nothing for us to set up a view to the city's finances, set up a view and have that link to this to this. Um, and now it wouldn't be, um, a ton of extra work. We're gonna provide certain. We're gonna provide certain, and I'll have Jacob speak on that in a second. We're gonna provide certain foods. Um, specifically, I think right now we're gonna like sell stretch. That we're gonna give to all the treasurers, all the volunteer fire departments. And then they can just plug that in and send it back. So they're archiving. Strategy. Um, and then we can also leave certain reports from the system. So if a city, if if your treasurer wants to send us reports as well, we can do that. And we can have it all live on one site. Um, and so that's what the pilot is for, to ask questions and to figure out the pitfalls and to figure out the work. Um, and so we're we're still learning ourselves. Oh, actually. And that's that's what we're here for is to help you guys understand. Oh, yeah, no, we're not deploying yet. Yeah, we got we got we we're probably about a year out. That's you know that. I'm not sure. I'm not sure. I'm just here to show the part.
Tom.
But we just. We just need to take our. Couple weeks. As long as we get the data on it by the time of the basis. If we if we got ten departments, if we got ten fire departments data from once, if we take a couple groups to put them on. Yeah, I mean, and 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 that's and that's not easy. That's not that's not a hard job. So we can come back and question you. And we can push more town halls, but we'll pull the bleachers out half of here. I mean, as many trains as you want to work. And also, if if you think. Do do those volunteer, like you guys mostly all have like a computer or laptop for the for the department that you can use. We can also do a cheap call and and teach call too. So it doesn't always have to be a person, but if if you guys have that capability, you can do that. It is. Right. It'll it'll be out there if you can use if you want. And we'll be final time. Before we put it out. We're not just gonna get the data and throw it out there. We'll work with you to make sure the accuracy makes sure that it's correct. Yeah, so and that's and that's what I was just speaking to you. So it it and that's and that's why the pilot's important because we don't know what the financial situation would be for volunteer fire departments. If you have QuickBooks, some folks have QuickBooks, some folks have Excel. It sort of just depends on what your mechanism of booking is in order for us to get the data. So if you have it in Excel, we can we can use what you've already built and use that to format it for a way to put together. Cause it needs a certain style format. It needs to be in Excel format. So if you have like a QuickBooks or Macintosh or some sort of booking software. If we are able to get it in a CSV Excel format, that's how we use. When Fayville sent me their records. Um, you guys sent me the, um, CSVs. So that's really how we need to do it is through Excel template, which we are working on. So we can give you guys the template. You guys plug in the transactions that are relevant that need to go on there. You send it back to us and we're loaded for it. That's the ideal way that we're we're attempting to do this to start. But the point of the pilot is to find out what we're missing. So then when we deploy for the whole state, then we can. And so if you if you folks are interested in joining, we try to get started and get it done early, um, we'd love to have. So we've we've got about ten or fifteen right now. I think we can probably cuddle up around. So you guys. That's a big, yeah, that's that's a big. Yeah, that's I mean. I can work with you all individually. You can use a group, whether it's Zoom or Teams or whatever it may be. I can come back here again and and we can have like a workday and just everyone gets me the data that they're working. Um, there's a lot of them with we're very flexible. We can get the road along. Um, I'll hang around. I'll hang around back here. Everyone can share their information with me. I'll keep you guys up to date on what we're at across this. And whenever, um, you guys set a date for this reimbursement policy. Um, I'd be more than happy to to work around that and to make sure that you guys make precise levels ready. Before that. So, um, yeah, like I said, I I, you know. The business between we y'all is is your own business. I'm just here to show the platform and any help that you guys think you can always reach out. I have to backhand my part out. So, um, every truck manufacturer that sells a bill in West Virginia is required to do this. Every sheriff's office may be disqualified. Each office is required to do this. Um, all of the economic developments. Um, all of the EAs about this later are required to use some. If they decide to file. It is it is very important by statute, but there's no trigger mechanism to punish them. Which is not my. We just we just knew the legislative. If that was that that class. Set bill. Then twenty two. So. So, yeah, I'll go over here if you guys want to give your contact info, get started, account. Thank you.
All right, I guess we're gonna adjourn. You got any questions, John? No questions, maybe. Well, I think that we're gonna approve them. I think that it might be fit. I mean, I'm not sure. This data is not here. Bruce is not here. Well, I was gonna consider, I'm gonna work the mission. Re-commission would have to go to the head rector office. What I was wanting to do is basically here around the county. July, just like yours is. July third to June third.
What you propose in that thing, you've been pitched this issue. And I just want to say, Bill, Bill, like.
Okay, we will. Any other questions? Got more journalists? I don't know about the heartburn. I have no idea. We're going, you're gonna you're gonna get reimbursed and we'll let you know more about the fifth hour. We we will reimburse. We're not gonna leave you on the drive. We're not gonna leave you on the drive. Yeah, we're not gonna leave you on the drive. Just just so you can see if we can not pay you that further on it. I'll make it the fifth. That's what I'm doing. I think the county has worked for it, Skyler. Is the county not starting?
Yeah.
And we've already started. Please adjourn.